Good afternoon, welcome to the Oakland City Council, Council Meeting. And, uh, City Council Members, if you can please take your seats so we can get the meeting started. It's now three thirty-five. And, um, so, Madam City Clerk, go ahead and get us started, thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome to the special concurrent meeting of the Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency and City Council of Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we will begin with the roll call, Councilmember Brown, present. Councilmember Fife-
Present.
Councilmember Houston-
Right.
Councilmember Kaplan-
Here.
Councilmember Ramachandran-
Present.
Councilmember Unger-
Here.
And Pro Tim Guo, who will be chairing this meeting-
Present.
Showing seven members present. If you'd like to speak on any agenda item on this agenda, please fill out a speaker's card and return that card to a clerk representative before the item is called for discussion. As the council member rules of procedure states, you have an hour and thirty minutes from the start of this meeting to sign up for an item. All cards must be received before the item is called into discussion or by five oh-two P M. Mister Chair, do you have any announcements before we begin the rest of the agenda?
If you would like to address the council, please make sure you fill out the speakers' cards and our speakers will have two minutes for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Guo. There are no ceremonial items for item three, going to item four, which is modifications to the agenda and procedural items.
Um, George Nolio with the Mayor's Office, we have an amendment to the resolution, um, for item five point five, I believe, the item honoring Ricky Henderson, and the Mayor will be joining us shortly to read in the, the new resolution.
Thank you, let's keep moving on, thank you.
Going to item five, which is the consent calendar, starting with item five point one, which is approval of the draft minutes from the meetings of January thirteenth and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. Item five point two, a resolution in regards to the declaration of a local emergency due to the AIDS epidemic. Item five point three, a resolution in regard to the declaration of medical cannabis health emergency. Item five point four, a resolution in regard to emergency on homelessness. Item five point five, a resolution to rename a portion of Coliseum Way as Ricky Henderson Way, just noting that the Mayor's Office will have an amendment to that item. Item five point six, a resolution in regard to the Oakland International Airport Community Noise Management Forum appointee. Item five point seven, a resolution in regards to the Alameda County Transportation Commission Appointment. Item five point eight, a resolution reappointing Noel Guo to the Joint Powers Authority-led poisoning prevention and reappointment of Director Gilchrist as an alternate member. Item five point nine, a resolution in regards to the East Bay Community Energy Authority, Joint Powers Authority Appointment. Item five point ten, a resolution in regards to the Alameda County Waste Management Authority Board Appointment. Item five point eleven, a resolution in regard to the East Bay Regional Wildfire Prevention Coordinating Appointment, appointing Councilmember Ramachandran. Item five point twelve, a resolution in regards to the California League of Cities Appointments, appointing Councilmember Guo to represent the City of Oakland. Item five point thirteen, a resolution in regard to the Marlin Settlement for Marlin Sacks and Alameda County Tax- Taxpayers Association versus the City of Oakland. Item five point fourteen, a resolution in regards to the settlement for Bernita Tony versus the City of Oakland. Item five point fifteen, a resolution in regard to the Cal Home Grant for two thousand and twenty-four. Item five point sixteen, a resolution in regards to Coral Partnership for the Bay Future M O U. And item five point seventeen, an ordinance for introduction for the East Twelfth Remainder Parcel, L D D A and Ground Lease. Item five point eighteen, a resolution, I'm sorry, an ordinance for introduction in regards to Family Bridges Lease and Big Oakland Rent Forgiveness. And that concludes your consent calendar and you do have a number of speakers on this item.
Thank you, uh, we do have, uh, let me hear from the speakers, I do want, uh, the Mayor also has joined us and we'll do the special recognition, so let me hear from the public, it is a public meeting, let me hear from the public speakers, thank you.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order, please state your name for the record. If you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you. Um, as with past practice, the members in chambers will be called first and your time will begin once you approach the podium. Uh, this Smith A Brayley from the Village, I'm sorry if I said your name incorrectly. Joyous Morale, Nita B., Stephanie N. Kimsu, Gilbert A. Mendoza, Stephanie Down-Minter, Mercedes Gonzalez, Zandry Martinez, Lee Yucy, Mr. Samuel Remzy, Ramey, David Boatright, Mr. Hazard, Ms. Asada Olabala, Brandy Bell. Please approach the podium in any order, please state your name for the record before beginning.
David Boatright, District Four, I'm talking about item S five point one five, and I have a recommendation to make and that is that, in applying for this grant, it's a big grant and it's coming from a source that's tied on money as well, that you put some comments in there about what you're gonna do to make sure the money is spent properly, accounted for, and that you're gonna get, uh, a list of results from this investment. And you're going to get, good grief, uh, you're going to get some results from this and not just spend the money and, and then walk away from it, thank you.
If, if your name was called, please come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Gilbert Mendoza, Oakland native. I was homeless recently, uh, from after eighteen years in my house, new ownership, uh, was relocated to Alameda Safe Parking Place in front of the Coliseum on Sixty-sixth Avenue. Been there for, uh, eight months, uh, from day one, I've been harassed by the, uh, Urban Alkene, uh, they've run the, they've run the program. Went to work, uh, Jan- December twenty-sixth at Costco and haven't been allowed on the property with my wife or my dogs, uh, since then, uh, and now I'm on the streets in my car, uh, trying to figure out why. If we're all homeless and we're all financially strapped in a situation where we're in, in trying to get back on our feet and then we have, it's a program and they're all from prison, so they run the place like a prison. Uh, been, like I said, I haven't been there for thirty-seven days and, uh, not sure what, my dogs are there, my wife's there, my trailer's there, um, like I said, uh, I lost my son a few years ago in a car crash, so just kind of, uh, figure out why I'm not allowed to back on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyous, I'm with the Village in Oakland, I'll be reading some testimonies. My name is Brian Health, I've been unhoused for fifteen years in the same spot. I've been evicted four times by the City of Oakland from the homeless encampments I have lived in. The most recent was on East Twelfth and Ninth Avenue. I have built myself a house, they threw away my medicine, my license, batteries, extension cords, family photos, TV, radios, power tools, phones, laptops, prescription eyeglasses and all my clothes. They didn't offer me anything like a place to stay, services or storage for my property. They were supposed to bag and tag my stuff but never did. The workers even took some of my stuff for themselves. I reached out to nonprofits like Roots for help, I'm on Roots waiting list for housing. I need financial help to pay rent, I've tried to get SSI. The city needs to remember we're people, this is not a war. Not all of us are using drugs out here, there are battling people who don't have the means to fight back. They shouldn't be at war with us. They should let us stay in abandoned lots or empty houses until they can figure out a real solution for us. I feel like those in the city who do this to us are meant to kill us off. They can support us with good rehab and mental health support and facilities, we need support in that. Only God can help us now, I feel. We all deserve a place to help ourselves. Section Eight and other housing places have strict rules that need, that don't need to be there, like if I'm not home for three days, or no guests allowed. This is not a prison, this is supposed to be shelter. I'll be reading a second one. I am Brian Davis, I am a resident at Jurassic Park. I am a sixty, I'm a sixty-one-year-old man born and raised in Oakland, California. I suffer from PTSD, anxiety, depression and triple CMS, which I take meds for. I've been unhoused in Oakland since two thousand and nineteen, I have lived in Jurassic Park the whole time I have been homeless. Since I've been living here, no city or nonprofits have come by to offer me any services or shelter. The Village is the only group that has come by and offered me help. I personally have never been evicted by the city, but I did have a two thousand and five Chevy van that was parked across from my fifth wheeler that I lived in. I let my friend and his lady in that Che- Chevy van to stay. Right before Christmas, the city towed it without notice. They said if the car does not run or does not turn on, they were going to tow it. The city did not care that my friends had nowhere to go and the city did not care that they were throwing away all their property that they needed to survive inside the vehicle. They were left on the sidewalk and not offered any services or shelter and I lost my van. I passed on the title and registration to my friend and the city ignored the paperwork. Our friend was not-
Thank you, your time is up.
Uh, my name is Stephanie Kimball and I'd like to cede my time to her.
There's no seating time at open forum, I'm sorry, in, uh, on the consent calendar.
My name is Scott Brayley, I'm a resident of District One. Um, I'm reading testimony taken by the Village on November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. I am Ashley Hatfield, who is a resident of each tw- East Twelfth Shantytown. I am a black stud born and raised in Oakland, I'd have lived on East Twelfth for ten years. I've experienced one eviction from East Twelfth and Twenty-third Avenue Village in January two thousand and nineteen. Living at the Village was when I'd been the most stable. The city threw away all my things, they bulldozed my tent, they threw away my work clothes, irreplaceable family heirlooms like the knitted blanket my great-grandmother made. She knitted it out of pairs of jeans of our whole family and was passed on to my grandmother, my mom and then me. I didn't want to take it when my mom gave it to me because it was so special, but she insisted because she wanted me to stay warm. They also threw away my I D, social security card, birth certificate and all my legal documents, my shoes, socks, clothes, family photos, flashlights, spotlights, work equipment for my different jobs, painting, canvassing, construction and automotive technician. I lost all my tools. My mom put up her house to pay for me to go to school for all those trades. This is how I made a living for the past twenty years and it took me time to buy all the tools I needed for those trades. I had a legal case and they threw away all the documents for the case. It was an injury case and I could no longer prove what happened to me because the city threw away all my documents for court, so I was never able to get justice for the harm done to me. I lost the case because my evidence was thrown away by the city. They threw away the necklace my mom gave me, a ring my grandmother gave me, she had that since she was eighteen, she's eighty-one now. We cried when we found out that she threw away, we cried when she found out that we, they threw away her ring. They threw away my suitcase and backpacks, they threw away my bike, they threw away my pride and dignity that day. This all happened while I was at one of my jobs, I had to leave work to try to get my belongings and my trade tools and lost my job and all the tools the city threw away. Them taking my tools was a major setback, I haven't fully recovered from that eviction. What they did to me made everything worse. I took their offer to housing and went to Miller Avenue Tough Shed, I kept on going to work. I took every class they told me to take and followed every rule and ever, after six months, they kicked me out because they said I wasn't there enough. Everywhere else, everyone else just sat around. I was actually bettering myself and doing something with my life and I got penalized for that. They wanted me to be like everyone else in the tough sheds, staying in their shed and doing absolutely nothing. I had literally nowhere to go and I had not been stable since then. Since January two thousand and nineteen, I've been floating around East Twelfth and couch surfing whenever I can. Sometimes I stay at my friend's RV on Twelfth and Twenty-sixth.
My name's Nita B., I'm with the Village in Oakland and I'll be reading two testimonies. The first one is from Bartholomew Drazen. I am Bartholomew Drazen, a resident of the East Twelfth Street Shantytown. I'm a black man who has lived in Oakland since birth, I'm an Oakland native, I've been at East Twelfth Shantytown for six months. I lived at East Twelfth and Twenty-third Avenue eight years ago and was part of the East Twelfth and Twenty-third Avenue Village. I was evicted there, uh, January two thousand and nineteen. I can't remember ti- how many times I've been evicted since then. I don't know, maybe five times, maybe three times, since I've lived here on East Twelfth. I can't recall dates, but the city sent police and the Department of Public Works to destroy our places. I was in a built structure and they destroyed it. My property was taken, like my iPhone six, my iPhone seven, my I Ds, C D albums, personal songs of my music that I recorded, all of them had twelve to sixteen songs on each C D, clothes, Jordans and three bikes. This erupted, this erupted my art, my career as an artist, now I have PTSD, bipolar, panic attacks, anxiety and schizophrenia and I'm completely messed up because they took my music and rap book and my music and rap and writing is what helps me cope with stress. I have not received any resources or shelter or housing offers, they just came and said, get your stuff, we're evicting you now. Pretty much the warning was them telling me to leave. If they offered housing, I wouldn't decline, I need all the help I can get. Since being at East Twelfth, which I consider my safe haven, I have not been evicted from my new space. I have seen people coming and illegally dumping, it takes about a week or more for the city to come and clean up. They take most of the trash, but they leave some debris. I have a car, um, but two that I lived in have been towed by the city. I was not given any of my vehicles back and I did not know how to get them back. They took me to jail, so I was incapable of getting anything back. It impacted me by putting me in a situation where now I am in a tent and not in a structured home or a vehicle. I'd rather be in a vehicle but they towed it away. The eviction from East Twelfth and Twenty-third impacted me by creating serious mental issues and making me real violent because I want to defend myself all the time now, I don't feel safe anymore. I knew the city had money that they were spending on evictions, instead of using that money on eviction, the city could give out checks so that everyone can have a piece of the pie. I need support in the form of helping, in the form of help including housing, mental health services, doctors, I need a judge to help me, I need a nurse, food, clothing, I would appreciate wraparound services. I have a learning disability which includes reading comprehension, understanding and a hearing disability. I am on a mission to turn my life around and to make myself an example for everyone else. I am David Anthony Vargas, a sixty-year-old Mexican-American man living at East Twelfth and Seventeenth Street Shantytown. I live out here with my brother Robert, I was born in Los Angeles but raised in Oakland, I went to Oakland High School and Street Academy. I have been homeless since two thousand and seventeen, I was evicted by the city in two thousand and nineteen when they bulldozed the Village on East Twelfth and Twenty-third There's several other- ...that we have included in the packets, we just didn't get all of them today, we'll be back with more next week.
I want to address mostly the two items on the agenda that relate to housing and that would be S five fifteen, the Cal Home Grant and S five seventeen, the East Twelfth Parcel Two. Now, the report in the East Twelfth Parcel Two makes the statement that the City of Oakland has a critical housing shortage. So, when you are putting forth before this body, staff, anything having to do with housing and we have a housing shortage, how are we gonna produce sufficient amount of housing to close the gap that is wide? So, with the home grant, you are gonna be providing low-income homeownership with a five million dollar grant from the state that you don't have, what you're going through right now is the possibility, is allowing the, applying for the grant. And in applying for the grant, the total grant, I think is fifteen million dollars for everybody across the state, knowing that we got an issue down in, uh, California where a lot of people have lost their homes and this particular grant does apply for people who have been involved in a disaster. So, what is the probability that we're gonna get the five million? I think a very low probability. You also say that, how many, you didn't, nobody asked this, how many houses are gonna be able to be owned by low-income people? You have identified the houses because you got a low housing, uh, stack of houses, you don't have them. Then when you go to the East, uh, Twelfth Street Parcel, you have in your race and equity statement, let me go to that craziness, because y'all always got crazy race and equity statement, you say that the ninety-four units will be, uh, for disproportionately people of color nationally. Now, what is people of color nationally, somebody needs to define that. So, all you're saying is all of these housing will not be for white people. That's what you're saying, that's what you're saying. Then you say there will be Hispanics and Latinos that will be included. Now, Hispanics and Latino are ethnic group, the majority of them, uh, identify as white. So, are you saying you're gonna eliminate the white Hispanic and Latino group for being involved in this housing project? Then you go on to say that the housing project is being led by the Economic and Workforce Development instead of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Why is that? Why do we not have the Housing and Eca- Community Development Department heading up the-
My name is Samuel Ring, I'm with the National Homeland Security Mental Health Algorithm out of Chicago, Illinois, I restarted the chapter here, Oakland chapter back. Uh, we violating their constitution right. Under the Constitution says, under Stu B. McKenna says, no one in America should be homeless. That's Constitution. Every American deserves to have health, education, welfare, that's Constitution. What y'all doing violating people's constitution right, okay? All this money coming down, they said, no one get evicted, okay? No one in America gonna get evicted. Three point three billion for California to house the mental health, because most people homeless is mental health. You stay out there, no, no, you gonna be mental health, and it's wrong. Y'all, you do something about that, you got two million dollars, give a man for, come up with a plan to, for a town? To come up with a plan for a town, not for the plan, to come up with a plan. Y'all got money to house us, fuck y'all think this is? Got wrong for, oh for homeless, eating out of garbage can, go out there, look, it's sad. It's real sad, and y'all-
If your name was called and you wish your address to council, please step to the podium, Brandy Bell, Mr. Hazard, Stephanie N. Kimsu, Stephanie Minter, Mercedes Gonzalez, Zandry Martinez and Lee Yucy.
Give three to each one of them.
Jean, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I want each to have a copy what I just, before I start. I put them crisscross. Each council person gets three copies. Everybody should have three copies.
Got it.
I had them where it could be easily handed out.
Go ahead, Mr. Hazard, we have-
So, for the listening public, you could go to cleanOakland.com and go to my blog because what I'm about ready to tell you, you could find it all there. Firstly, you will see, uh, when you go to that blog, the certified copy of my rebuttal against, uh, the proponents who favor the ballot measure, but they're only talking about sales tax, that's not what the ballot measure is. The ballot measure on April fifteenth, Mr. Unger, is the transaction and use tax, it's not a sales tax, okay? So, that's number one. Number two, July sixteenth, Resolution nine oh-three-six-four, Resolution Recognizing Fitna as a Public Health Crisis. You approve this on July sixteenth, nine oh-three-six-four, so the city attorney is blocking you from executing what you approved, they have no authority to do that at all. So, you need to put Fitna as noted here, which was introduced by Guo, Kaplan and Trevor Reed, dated July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Resolution Recognizing Fitna as a Public Health Crisis, Fitna is a- Fentanyl is a synthetic opioid, up to 50 times more potent than heroin. There are 7,300 opioid-related deaths in California 2022. Went up to 6,6,473, whereas in 2029 in Alameda County in 2022. So children are dying. You did a resolution, approved by the council on July 16th. So what the city attorney is telling you is a bunch of crap. They can't override the council's action. Take cannabis as a crisis off the agenda and replace that with, uh, fentanyl, uh, with fentanyl as a crisis. Uh, Lori on fentanyl in San Francisco. That person in the White House is doing a fentanyl thing. So, and you sitting on your butts. So also, when you go to that, uh, cleanoakland.com and my blog, you will get a copy of the grand jury transcript. Read it. Also, you will see 50,000 residents in Oakland because of the interim mayor. 50,000 residents in District 6 are without any representation. Look at the roll call. You don't see District 6 on there. They need to file an injunction and a writ because they do not have representation.
Um, we have speakers on Zoom.
We have speakers on Zoom.
Osama, did you submit a card or so, under what name?
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't submit a card. It told me that I missed the, the comment. For some reason, I've been trying since 2:30 up till now.
Names have been called at this time. If your name was called and you wish to address the council, please step to the podium. If you submitted a card for this item.
Yes, I did. Hi, my name is Andrew Martinez. I'm a resident of Alameda County and I'll be reading declarations from members of the community. Uh, the first one is from Donald Williams. I'll speak in his voice. So my name is Donald Will- Williams. I am going to be 65 years old this February. I'm a black Native American male, born and raised in Oakland. I have been unhoused for eight months in Oakland. My housing was being subsidized by Adobe. My place furnished by lifelong medical clinic. My landlord evicted me and I didn't know my rights, so I didn't know that the eviction was illegal. The landlord didn't tell Adobe he evicted me and my landlord kept taking rent from the Adobe. I had been unhoused for about seven months before I got the housing through Adobe. After the landlord evicted me, I ended up bouncing around between sleeping in my car and hotels. I got an RV around, about five months ago and parked it here in front of Extra Storage on East 12th and 26th Avenue. Since I have been unhoused, I have never been evicted by the city. But the city has never offered me any services or shelter. Instead of evicting us or ignoring us, the city could use that money to have places we get, can shower, get food, jobs, permanent housing, medical services, trash services. To get permanent housing and keep permanent jo- how, to get housing and keep permanent housing, I need a job. I don't have a way to get around. I currently get SSI because I have sciatica. I can't sit or stand too long and I'm in pain 24 hours a day. If the city were to come and take my RV, they would take all I have and I would no longer have a place to live. I don't know what I will do. It stresses me out to even think about it. Since, since this testimony was taken, the city threatened to tow the RV community on East 12th between 26th and 29th on January 12th. A majority of the residents were towed from that location with volunteers from Love and Justice in the streets and donations from the community. The city never showed up to tow the RVs, but did two, three passenger vehicles people lived in three days before the tow date stated on the orange stickers. Next, my name is Jesus Maltavo. I'm 47-year-old Hispanic man. I have been unhoused in Oakland for two months. I'm originally from Redwood City and moved out to Oakland in 2001. I've been living in my current location on East 12th in front of the Extra Storage since I became unhoused. I live in a trailer with my girlfriend and three dogs. Since I've been here, the city has offered, has not offered me any services nor have any nonprofits. If the city were to tow my trailer and throw me out and my girlfriend's belongings, it would be a major setback because we would have to start all over again. Instead of evicting us, the city could help us out. They should be helping us go places when it's cold or offer us long-term shelter and housing options instead of evicting us. Thank you.
At this time, all names have been called. Again, if you wish to address the council, please step to the podium if your name was called.
Mercedes Gonzalez. I'm here because a few months ago, I was kicked out of the RV park over there off of Hispanician, I mean, um, off of Southern Boulevard for reasons that, um, to me, I, I really don't know. Um, and for that, I was living in my truck in front of the RV park. I was deprived of my oxygen tank. I was not allowed to go back on the premises. My stuff still sits there inside that, that RV park. And now the city, the parking officer are harassing me now because, well, um, I'm sitting in my park, in my truck, hoping that, you know, someday that they'll come out and give me back my resources that they've taken away from me. And, um, I just get, it has taken a real toll on me, on, on my health and things like that. But, um, yeah, um, I just want to know, I just want some answers as to why he, that manager had thrown me out the way he did. He refuses to talk to me and I don't got no answers to that. And I'm trying to-
I think it's that, I, I don't know what it is.
Is that the Senator's press conference? That's Senator's press conference?
I'm sorry, ma'am, just continue. Just go ahead and finish.
I just want to make sure you guys heard that they took, they won't give her her oxygen tank back. She's had pneumonia since they haven't given her oxygen tank back. And she wants her property back, including her trailer that's inside there.
Thank you, thank you. Any more speakers? Madam City Clerk, with that, I want to-
At this time, all names have been called.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank all of you for being here and we will get, uh, go next to item 5.5. Uh, renaming a portion of the Coliseum Way, Ace Ricky Henderson Way. Officer, the mayor and the council members Kaplan, Houston and Ramachandran. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, President. Guio, happy Black History Month and Black Futures Month to everyone here. Como la sociedad. So it's a, it's an honor and a somber to read this. And there are a number of changes that we've done. Um, so I want to note that there's the addition of Councilmember Brown here. So this is introduced by Mayor Jenkins, Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Houston, Councilmember Ramachandran and Councilmember Brown. Resolution to commemoratively rename the intersection at 51st Street and Broadway as Ricky Henderson Way and authorize the installation of a plaque or sign honoring Ricky Henderson pursuant to the policy and procedures established by Oakland City Council, Resolution Number 77967 CMS. And three, declaring February 4th in the city of Oakland as Ricky Henderson Day and making appropriate California Environmental Quality Act findings. So whereas California government calls section 3.4 to the parliament area, I have to read all of this through? Okay, we'll hear it all. Go ahead.
The Chair, um, if there are edits, you can just read, uh, the new amendments.
Okay, so we'll go through it. Uh, Councilmember Houston has requested. Uh, allows a jurisdiction by resolution to name a public, to name a new public street or to rename an existing public street. And whereas the name of a new public street or the renaming of an existing public street is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970. And whereas the city council will occasionally honor the contributions of an outstanding individual with commemorative street names or by renaming of a public street, such as with Bruce Lee Way, Herbert Geis Way, Peter Van Cleef Way, Dr. Huey P. Newton Way, Deontay Bush Way, Dorothy King Way and Too Short Way. And whereas pursuant to Oakland City Council Resolution Number 77967 CMS, the city council may, on its motion, consider renaming a public street as a tribute to an individual or as a result of a significant event or activity if one of the following criteria is met. One, the individual has positively impacted the lives of a nation or the world. Two, the name change is related to an economic development or redevelopment activity. Three, the renaming commemorates a significant historical event. And bear with me, whereas the city council may commemorate a nominee either by a retaining the existing street name and installing a commemorative plaque or sign or renaming the existing street for an individual and installing a new street name. And whereas the man of steel, the commander of left field, Ricky Nelson Hindley Henderson was born December 25th, Christmas Day, 1958 in Chicago, Illinois. And whereas, as an athletically gifted young individual, Ricky Henderson shined in basketball, football, baseball and track as a student athlete at Oakland Technical High School. In 1976, as an Oakland Tech senior, he was named California State Baseball Player of the Year. His natural talent on the baseball diamond drew the attention of professional baseball scouts, notably J.J. Gwynn, who worked for the Oakland Athletics. Whereas drafted, Oakland A's. And whereas drafted by the A's in the fourth round in 1976, Henderson started in the major leagues with a call-up from the A Athletics in 1979, playing in the MLB for 25 years. As a professional baseball player, Henderson played for a total of seven major league baseball teams. But he most, he is most recognized for his time with Oakland A's. He stole over 100 bases in three seasons and 130 in 1982 is still the single-season record. Henderson broke the world stolen base record by stealing his 1,066 base, breaking the record held by Utaka Fukamoto. Ultimately, Henderson would steal 1,406 bases in his career. Henderson is also considered to be the greatest leadoff hitter, amassing 81 home runs as a leadoff hitter. And whereas Ricky Henderson played more than 3,000 games, achieving two World Series titles, 10 All-Star, All-Star appearances, a Gold Glove and three Silver Slugger Awards. He was inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame in 2009. In 2017, the Oakland Athletics honored him by renaming the field at the Oakland Coliseum to Ricky Henderson Field, one of the three fields to bear his name, including Ricky Henderson Baseball Field located at Royal VAO Park, District 6, and Ricky Henderson Field of Dreams located at Oakland Technical High School. And whereas, after more than 25 years of playing professional baseball in the major leagues, minor leagues and independent leagues, Ricky Henderson retired as a player, but still remained involved with the game that he loved, serving as a special instructor and first base coach for the New York Mets and then a special instructor with the Oakland A's from 2010 to 2024. And whereas, on December 24th, on December 20th, 2024, Ricky Henderson passed away. He is survived by his wife, Pamela, their three children, Angela, Alexis and Adriana, his mother Bobby, his brothers, sisters, nieces, sister, nieces, nephew, stepfather and a whole slew of cousins. And whereas, the life and legacy of the late Ricky Henderson have inspired joy and fostered community among Oaklanders. In honor of Ricky Henderson's contributions to the city of Oakland, the city council intends that February 4th shall be known as Ricky Henderson Day. And whereas, the city council intends that the cost associated with such a commemorative act will be borne by the office of Mayor Kevin Jenkins, Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan, Ken Houston and Johnani Ramachandran. And now for be it resolved that Oakland City Council hereby approves the commemorative renaming of the intersection of 51st Street and Broadway as Ricky Henderson Way and be it further resolved that the Oakland City Council directs the city administrator to proceed with the commemorative designation of Ricky Henderson Way and the placement of street signs or signs or plaques to that effect at the intersection of 51st Street and Broadway. And be it further resolved in honor of the life, legacy of Ricky Henderson and famed, and his famed Oakland Athletics number 24 jersey henceforth, declaring February 4th, 2-4, in the city of Oakland as Ricky Henderson Day. And I'm going to, to remember, right?
Well, first of all, thank you so much to my colleagues for leading, leading on this amazing honor. Thank you. And I just wanted to take a few moments to share some reflections on Ricky Henderson's impact. I would note that my very first game, um, was when I was four years old at, um, summer 1993. Um, and so his Ricky Hend- this is on Ricky Henderson. His, his athletic achievements speak for themselves and will stand the test of time. Every time he came to the plate at the Coliseum, we knew we were in for something special. But what he meant to the city is so much more than a baseball record. I'm inspired not just by what he was able to accomplish as a player, but how he played and how he lived his life. Yes, he was good at stealing bases and yes, he was fast. Um, but that was because he studied pitchers and he had an, an amazing attention to detail so that he could find that advantage. Whether it was a shoulder move or a heel twitch was all that he needed to take off. And it was really that level of focus that propelled him to greatness. Henderson was an incredible teammate who elevated those he played with and inspired them to have the same devotion to excellence that defined his career. Um, both myself and interim Mayor Jenkins, um, had the honor of being there on Saturday to hear from, you know, um, those who had the opportunity to play alongside him and those who he mentored. One such was Ken Griffey Jr. Um, and he was also, also known for his relentless joy and positivity that he brought each day. And most of all, throughout his career, he remained authentic and true to who he was, regardless of the circumstances, regardless of the achievements and no matter how quirky. All of these lessons that, and all of these are lessons that inspire me as a council member, a community member, and that will continue to resonate, um, you know, in this moment, but also for decades to come. And so we're honoring him with Ricky Henderson Way today, but his impact touched every corner of Oakland and that legacy will live on.
And, oh, sorry.
Anyone else?
We, we have a plaque. When, uh, everybody's ready, we can come down and take a pictures.
Yes, uh, Mr. Houston, would you like to make some comments? Get, get the microphone, Ken, right there. And introduce our friend. Introduce, introduce her, Ken.
Beat myself. My name is Pamela Henderson, Ricky Henderson's wife for over, that's not important right now. Okay. However, um, I was 15 when I met him in high school and, um, have lived this life with him. And I'm very, very grateful for the city of Oakland to acknowledge, um, a hard-working man that has set his name in history. And now that he has become another part of Black history, it makes us family really, really proud. And it's because of you, I really thank you to the staff and everyone that's here and has, um, given his support and more so to the people here. I really do wish that your, um, causes take effect. take effect in this office right here. Because from what I'm hearing so far, there are a lot of issues. I've grown up in Oakland for many years and time has changed it. But I think councilpeople here acknowledge that and are going to do their best to make things right for the city of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ken, I have Ms. Rebecca Kaplan on the line. Ms. Rebecca Cap-
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. It is such an honor to join together with my colleagues in bringing this item, and such an honor to have the representation here today as we honor an Oakland legend, but also declare today, February 4th, 2/4, as Ricky Henderson Day in honor of number 24, that we uplift and honor the legacy and the work and the community building and the leadership, but also dedicate ourselves to a future where we continue to uplift those qualities in the city and in members of our community so that we can continue to build these types of legacies. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Geio. If I can, Chair Geio, if I can say-
Oh, yes, Ken, Ken, I think we have Councilmember Ramachandran, and then you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I just want to uplift and honor everything that Ricky Henderson has done for the city. But most critically today, the inspiration that he continues to have, especially over our young people. I know he was an Oakland Tech grad. He was able to excel as a youth, not only in baseball, but also in basketball and football. And so many things that are important for young people to look up to and be proud of being from Oakland for. He gives inspiration to people of all ages, certainly. But the legacy that he has in uplifting Oakland on the national stage and on the international stage is something that we will all remember and cherish and honor. So thank you for your service in building this legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a two-thank, and that's why I let you introduce yourself. But what I want to share is growing up in Oakland, I went to school with Ricky's sister Glittis, and he meant so much to the youth. Because he had the drive and he showed us that you can win, you can win, just keep trying. So I want to thank you, Pamela, for coming out. And this is an honor to just have you here. And Ricky meant so much to the city of Oakland. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, if you want, I would like to join the presentation. Go ahead. Thank you, and members, yes, sir.
Because you left out a name, Joe Morgan Way. That's not included when you listed the names of the street names. Also, is Ricky Henderson Way, is that just on that block? Or is, how long does that go? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any speakers on this? No? So with that, members of the council, thank you for the presentation. And we do need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved second.
Mr. Houston, the question was about the street. I don't know exactly the length of the street or- Yes, sir.
Before we moved on, I wanted to pull item 5.0. No, that's 5.0.
To keep it under consent, everything that's under consent, we need to make a motion to approve the item.
Move approval.
Okay, the consent calendar was moved by Councilmember Kaplan, seconded by Councilmember Fife to approve the consent calendar with amendment to 5.5, with amendments read into record by Mayor Jenkins on roll for the consent calendar. Councilmembers Brown?
Aye.
Five?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Kaplan?
Aye.
Ramachandran?
Aye.
Unger?
Yes.
And Chair Geio?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes with seven ayes.
That takes us to-
Yes.
Open forum.
Is there any announcements from your colleagues or yourself before we move to open forum?
Are there any announcements from my council colleagues before I move to open forum? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ken, no? Let's go ahead to our public speakers, yes.
Through the chair, Councilmember Kaplan has her hand up, I believe she has some announcements.
Thank you so very much, and thank you, Chair Geio, for the opportunity. I wanted to be sure to let everyone know as we talk about the incredible sports legends of our past and our history and our present, to also talk about the sports legends of our future, who you can see at the Oakland Arena. On February 15th, the Oakland Arena will be the host of the HBCU NBA All-Star Classic. The NBA All-Star Games are coming to the Bay Area, not only to San Francisco, but about half of the events will be taking place in Oakland, including come experience the spirit of Rorical at the Oakland Arena. You can get tickets online for the HBCU Classic, Tuskegee versus Morehouse at the Oakland Arena on February 15th as part of NBA All-Star Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from the public speakers, please.
Thank you, Chair Geio. Calling in the names of those who signed up for open forum. Once you hear your name, please approach the podium or please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I'm lowering all hands in the Zoom app. So once you hear your name, please raise your hand in Zoom or approach the podium. Michael Branson, Gene Hazard, Chase Fowler or Fuller, sorry for mispronouncing your name, Jennifer Foster, Nicole Welch, Tony Di, Dukupa, I'm sorry for, thank you. Lakshmi, Robin Levinson, Lake Tibalt, Rebecca Johnson, Michael Patterson, Juanito Rus, Sarah Fine, Asada Olabala, Palvavi Summumati, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, Simeon Rami, Caleb Smith, Akila Leslie, Gwen McKellen, in no particular order.
So this Thursday, the Privacy Commission is meeting. And the Privacy Commission agenda says that they will form an ad hoc committee that will look at the possibility of federal executive orders and obligations that might impact immigrants, LGBTQ, and DEI-related programs. So why is the Privacy Commission taking that up? Why don't you take it up? To deal with the fact that you are a sanctuary city and you might have problems related to whatever because of that. But you're throwing it into the place of private citizens to do an ad hoc committee. Step up. Now, I'm going to tell this to all Black people. Don't get thrown into this trap of believing that DEI has something to do with you. Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Programs, white women benefit from that. Affirmative action, white women benefit from that. We don't benefit from any of those programs. So stop getting about you're going to boycott Target or you're going to boycott this because it doesn't impact us. Now, Monday, the legislators met, and they came up with $50 million, $25 million so that you can legally protect illegal immigrants, another $25 million so you can give to lawyers and whoever, resources and services to protect illegal immigrants. The Republicans were trying to get these people to say that money cannot be for people who are here illegally committing crimes. They would not allow it. So right now, the state of California is saying, we will protect criminals as a part of the protection of any illegal immigrants in the state of California. And why are they doing it? Because illegal immigrants who commit crimes fill up the jails. Everything that's going on is deception. Donald Trump could care less about DEI. It's by taking all of the federal money that he must and-
Thank you, Ms. Olabala.
So again, take out your phones here in the chambers and at home. Go to cleanoakland.com and look at my blog. So the first thing you're going to see, certified rebuttal to the argument in favor of the transaction and use tax. Out of the four proponents who were supporting, in favor, two of them are mayoral candidates. Why would you support them if they don't even know what the ballot measure is? The ballot measure is not a sales tax. The ballot measure is clearly a transaction and use tax. You will also see 50,000 residents in District 6 denied representation, violates the California Constitutional Article 2. You will also see the Sheng Tao indictment, okay? Along with Andre Jones, David Wong, and Andy Wong. You get the complete transcript of the grand jury indictment. And the enabling legislation for the use tax is Assembly Bill 155 Use Tax. So you could go again to cleanoakland.com and look at my blog and everything that you want to know what's wrong with the misrepresentation by the city attorney, particularly city attorney. Because you, they're in that use tax, they're denying you the opportunity to file any legal action for redress. That's illegal. You can't cross over into terms of the judicial jurisdictions. That's not supposed to be included in this ballot measure on April 15th, the transaction use tax. Thank you. Cleanoakland.com and go to my blog.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Branson. I've worked for the city for six years in the office of the city attorney. I'm a member of Local 21. This council should be upset and should be demanding answers from the administration. Local 21 and our union coalition partners have been identifying problems and proposing solutions for quite some time now. Councilmembers have identified similar problems and have not received answers. We have been trying to work with the administration to address our challenges collaboratively. Despite what some councilmembers have heard, the administration has not followed through on discussions or negotiations with Local 21. Let's take a step back to see the chaos that is taking place. The administration is cutting off existing contracts, refusing to issue bonds, not responding to council requests to implement police overtime accountability, not providing cost estimates for a 2% temporary reduction in pay for top executives, not providing answers to identified problems with business tax collection. Instead, they have sent out layoff notices that do not appear to follow civil service rules. Layoff notices are being sent ahead of release of exempt limited-duration employees, are being sent to workers with seniority who love serving Oakland residents, to workers who are in revenue-generating positions, and to workers who are in positions that are not funded from the general purpose fund and therefore do not solve this problem. These steps do not make sense and in some circumstances are cruel. And let's be clear. Laying off experienced city employees will lead to service impacts. Please demand answers from the administration and let's work together for Oakland.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Foster and I'm the president of Local 21's ANW Chapter. I'm a 22-year employee and resident. I'm in a self-funded position and I personally generate the revenue to pay my salary, the salary of my team, and a city attorney. Thursday, I received my layoff notice. The administration and human resources have violated Oakland Charter, Chapter 2.08, Civil Service Rules and Procedures. This process is not lawful nor just and these letters must be rescinded immediately. Administration and HR has refused to meet in labor with good faith. The union currently has a perb charge filed against for the city for refusal to provide information since December regarding financials, layoffs, and job classifications impacted. Myself and other non-general fund and revenue-generating workers have been targeted to. Make no mistake, this chaos and disregard for civil servants and the services we provide is directly reflective of what's happening at the federal level. This is not Oakland. These layoffs are in opposition to council's request to make layoffs last option. Workers cannot be held accountable for failure of administration and finance to responsibly manage revenue, collection, and budget properly. The administration and human resources are in violation of Civil Service Rules 9.2, Layoff Procedures. Whenever it becomes necessary to reduce staff under the provisions of Section 9.01, these rules, no permanent employee in an affected class shall be laid off while there are employees without status in the same class. Employees without status in class shall be separated in the following order: temporary, probationary. No contract for services shall result in the loss of employment by person having permanent civil service status. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Protam, Geio, and council. My name is Lakshmi Rajagopalan. I'm a planner with the city's Planning and Building Department. Yesterday, I completed four years with the city of Oakland, and I'm also a Local 21 member. My department processes permits, ensures building safety, answers several public inquiries, and keeps the city compliant with all the state laws so that the city can continue to be eligible for affordable housing funds, all while facing a severe staff shortage. I'm deeply disappointed by the city administration's decision to balance the budget on our backs who keep the city functioning. And instead of taking accountability for poor financial management, the administration is pushing for layoffs. This approach is unacceptable. We demand that the administration address OPD's rampant, unbudgeted overspending, reduce the excessive number of highly-paid executives, and collect business taxes the city is owed. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Chase Fowler and I'm a civil engineer at Oak Dot and a proud member of IFPT Local 21. It has been incredibly disappointing to witness the city administration's narrow-minded focus on attacking city workers as we attempt to solve this budget crisis. As a civil engineer with Oak Dot, I helped redesign our streets and sidewalks to make them safer for all users of all abilities. The administration's actions and return-to-office mandate will not only exacerbate our department's 25% vacancy rate by hurting our ability to recruit and retain the highly-skilled workers that we need to make our streets safer. It's incredibly short-sighted, fiscally irresponsible, and disappointingly unimaginative. Rather than building our city's capabilities for providing essential services, they have chosen to play act as tech CEOs, slashing staff through layoffs and return-to-office mandates. If the administration is truly interested in solving our budget issues, they should take specific actionable steps to rein in police overtime. Every department in this city has a budget that they work within, bar one, OPD. My union and several members of the council have put forward budget alternatives that do not harm the city's ability to provide essential services for the residents of this city. The administration has chosen to ignore these alternatives and put all their energies towards laying off city workers, ignoring civil service rules and echoing the anti-worker rhetoric and policies that we're currently witnessing at the federal level. Please direct the administration to focus their efforts on bringing in uncollected business taxes and rein in OPD spending instead of crippling essential city services. Thank you. Thank you.
Sarah Fine, nine years of service to the city of Oakland this month, Local 21 member and employee of Oak Dot. I'm gravely concerned by the proposed layoffs and the way in which these layoffs have been conducted. Staff with 20-plus years of service have received notices. Staff have received notices while vacancies still exist in their classification in another department. This is not the process. This is chaos, and not totally unlike some of the actions we're seeing at the federal level where public employees and norms of government are also being disrespected and discarded. I represent supervisors and managers in the H and M chapter of Local 21. Our members spend half our energy just trying to push through recruitment processes and retaining the staff we have, all with record vacancy levels. Our people deliver the services Oaklanders deserve and depend on. Layoffs directly hurt services and residents and must be avoided. As supervisors and managers, our members are also accountable to manage our section and divisions budgets. As much as we'd like, we aren't allowed to exceed the funds we are budgeted to deliver paving, speed humps, crosswalks, and traffic signals. The city should be requiring this oversight of all departments and managing our citywide budget, including collecting all the business taxes the city is owed, instead of balancing the budget on the backs of the very workers keeping the city running.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Juanito Russ. I've been with the city for approximately eight years. I started here with the CPRB and then moved to the CPRA through the creation of the Police Commission, have worked with several of you in that capacity. Approximately three years ago, I moved internal to the OPD, to their Risk Management Bureau as an auditor, where I worked two years ago with a team of four auditors conducting audits for the federal consent decree that this city has been under for 20 years. In the bureau that I worked for, the Bureau of Risk Management at the OPD, we house both our audit unit and the Personal Assessment Unit, which is the team that does risk management of officers. They, the one that identifies problematic officers, tracks how they're improving over time, flags, problems, all of the things that are central core agreements of the city of Oakland with the federal judge related to the consent decree that this city has been under for 20 years. Over the last two years, my unit of auditors have lost two people, one who left to bart, one who promoted internally. So we are down to two auditors now performing all that work. On Thursday evening, I received my notice. I came in on Friday morning and found that on my floor and in my unit, the past unit, the ones who monitor problematic officers, also had all of their civilian employees except for one who received notices. So the OPD internal oversight to comply with the federal consent decree is now down to one person in my unit and one person in their unit. And we are supposed to have oversight over and respond to the federal judge for the entirety of the OPD. I do not know how those two people are going to do their job, and I do not know what the city is going to tell the judge.
If your name was called and you wish to address the council, please step to the podium.
My name is Robin Levinson, and I was born, raised, and still live here in Oakland in District Four. I work for the Human Services Department, where I help manage contracts with community organizations that serve youth ages zero to 21 and provide school, summer, violence prevention, employment, and a lot of other services to our children in Oakland. The decision made by the city administrator to lay off permanent staff diminishes the trust that we as staff have in our civil service process. I urge you to immediately intervene to ensure that this doesn't, this decision doesn't exacerbate our staffing issues or hinder these essential city services. Members of my union received their notices before. Any ELDE, any part-time, or staff from other outside temp agency even received information about their layoff. While I deeply appreciate staff members doing work across all different types of work agreements, I'm concerned that the administration did not consult our department or union leadership about who or where to cut. We know our department's best. Let us figure out how to work together out of crisis. These layoffs also don't help us reduce the deficit. As some of my colleagues have mentioned, many of the staff laid off were in positions that generate revenue. They're also positions not funded by the general purpose fund. Because these layoffs may not have followed our service manual, they also put the city at risk of being sued for violating this MOU, which will then cost us more money. I urge you to require the city administrator to work with our unions and to work with our department leadership to collect business taxes, to reduce overhead of highly paid top executives, and to address overspending in certain departments, recognizing that other departments have not overspent. We require that the city administrator communicate with staff before decisions are final and gather our input rather than have us learn through local news outlets what's happening or what's expected of us. These actions cannot wait until we have a permanent mayor in April. We need council to step up now.
My name is Caleb Smith. I'm an analyst in the Housing Community Development Department, speaking during my break today. I think my colleagues from around the city have conveyed the dismay with recent developments more eloquently than I could, but I think there's an additional important point to be made this evening. These decisions about how to address the city's financial crisis, which have recently been made by the administration, should not have been the job of the administration to make. Fundamentally, all budgets are a question of priorities, a question of which programs to fund or not fund, which grants to make or not make, what is the right balance between taxes and spending. These kinds of budget priority setting is fundamentally a responsibility of the city council, and for these responsibilities to be delegated to the city administration in the first place, I think is unfair to the city administration because fundamentally, the job of the city administrator, of any city manager in any California city, is to implement the direction of the city council as effectively and efficiently as possible. And to put the city administration in a role outside of that scope of responsibilities, I fear undermines the core responsibility of the city council to the voters of Oakland to make those kinds of core trade-offs and to ultimately answer back to the voters of Oakland for the decisions they make. Ultimately, I hope the city council therefore takes a more active role moving forward into some of these kinds of budget discussions and works with all the partners here today, as well as other stakeholders around the city, to find a more effective set of solutions moving forward, which again, is something that is a core responsibility of the city council. Thank you kindly for your time today.
Hello, my name is Gwynne McKellen, and I work in the Department of Public Works. I support the city's special events, ensuring that our street fairs and other public events recycle and compost their waste, which is a requirement of state law, and comply with the city's reusable foodware ordinance. I'm also writing Oakland's Disaster Debris Management Plan to ensure we're prepared for the next major disaster and can't get reimbursed from the state and federal government for the millions or billions in anticipated cleanup costs. We should not be cutting these essential city positions, nor should the city be leaving money on the table by cutting or refusing to fill revenue generating positions or failing to collect business taxes. Nobody should be losing their jobs because of the city's mismanagement. Thank you.
I've been with the city for nine and a half years, currently in Community Homelessness Services. You know, we haven't had a program manager in a couple of months now, but we do have leadership. We have leaders within our program, but we are pursuing the mission every day, but we haven't had a program manager in a couple of months. Our department, Human Services, hasn't had a director since June. But again, we are still pursuing this mission every day, sometimes remotely. This city has been critically understaffed for years. That has not been a secret. We've been saying that for years. And you think we can afford to lay off 100 more people? And there are vacancies in this budget, yet we are firing human beings who have families to feed. And these people couldn't even follow simple directions, like it's literally written down. Civil service rules matter. So my question is, is Elon Musk running the city of Oakland? Or are we just trying to suck up to him?
When Oakland is under attack, what do we do? Stop, block, stop!
Hi, everyone. My name is Akila Leslie, and unfortunately, I was one of the ones from my department, Oakland Parks and Rec, who got one of the layoff notices. Again, I am the director there. You know, I am, I'm from West Oakland, so grew up, born and raised, and it's just really unfortunate that, you know, to get one of these notices, it hurts very bad. Before I was even, before I was the director there, there weren't many programs going on. You know, I was the one who came and started a lot of the programming. We have Mommy and Me programming, we have yoga now. You know, I brought in numbers from our summer camp, we were doing spring camp, so it's just very unfortunate. A lot of our community kids, I was, I was a community kid, you know, I was raised in parks and recreation, so it's just an honor to be able to give back. And, you know, my, I get paid out of the soda tax, which was not supposed to be cut, so I just feel like, you know, the department is cutting from the top, I mean, they're cutting from the bottom instead of cutting from the top. We've hired about three new supervisors within the last couple of months in our department, and you know, they're all great, but it's just, like I said, it's very unfortunate. And yeah, I would, I would definitely hate to, you know, lose my position for, for what? Like I said, yeah, and a lot of our families, you know, will be very affected. A lot of, you know, our programming allows kids to stay out of trouble, like, you know, where they're gonna go. So we provide, you know, food giveaways for our communities. There's a lot of homelessness going on in West Oakland, so our community center is very essential to the West Oakland community. So hopefully, we see a change. And they're also eliminating my position, so who's going to run the rec center without me?
Greeting council members and community members. First, let me start off by saying Happy Black History Month. No matter what's happening outside of here, it's Black History Month. I'm gonna try to keep this short. This city is facing a budget deficit. This fiscal shortfall that has come to fruition under your leadership, the responsibility does not lie with the workers who keep our city running, but with the very administration that has mismanaged the city of Oakland's finances. The first point, layoffs should always be seen as a last resort, which is clearly described in the Civil Service Rules, Section 9.02. The decision to not only follow, to not follow civil service rules and issue layoff notices illustrates a clear failure in the city leadership and demonstrates such a profound misunderstanding of how government services operate. As I've previously said, upon review of the range of positions and classifications that are being laid off that are not paid out of the general fund, the fund most in the red, shows the administration did not consider all the ripple effects, including the quality and delay of vital city services. It's no secret that we are short-staffed and with layoffs, we're stretching workers even further. In conclusion, this is a structural deficit. Shared responsibilities demand shared accountabilities, and it's time for the city leadership to step up and demonstrate the same kind of accountability you expect from us workers.
Michael Patterson, IBW 1245, 24-year electrician. I said this in June, July of last year, that we would be here. Some of you who weren't elected at, who weren't in office yet are TNTK, too new to know. And that's not, and that's not a slight, because I've been here before. I've seen this happen before. I have nine electricians that I represent. Two work for municipal buildings, seven operate over 800 intersections in the city of Oakland, maintain over 50,000 streetlights, seven electricians. I'm talking to the stewards of this city. You guys are the stewards of this city. The residents, the residents depend on you. The city workers depend on you. We look to you all for leadership. This administration has succeeded. They have succeeded in causing confusion. They have succeeded in causing chaos. They have succeeded in creating a defiant and adversarial relationship with labor. None of this is of our doing. We have tried to be a partner with the city. We have tried to meet with them, and we're hearing that you're being told the labor is not trying to meet with us, with the city. I have messages in my phone from December where we set up dates with the city to meet about a reduction in force, and they keep changing the date. We give them new dates, they change the dates. I can't, I can't do this any, any, any longer. You have to find out why you're being told, what you're being told, and who's telling you that. Thank you for your time.
Do you wish to address the council? Otherwise, we will move to the Zoom speakers. Or anybody else whose name was called. Moving to the Zoom speakers, I have two cards, Nicole Welch in Pallavi. Nicole, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good evening, council. My name is Nicole Welch, a 23-year employee with the Revenue Management Bureau and a president of the H and M chapter of Local 21. I'm here because the layoff notices issued to city employees is once again an example of the utter incompetence of this administration. The level of disrespect is breathtaking. It signals to me that the administration would rather cut vital city services to the residents instead of dealing with the unbudgeted police department overtime or reduce redundant top executives. City employees were praised when we kept the lights on during the pandemic, but now that the administration's back is against the wall, they are willing, willingly and incompetently laying off my fellow brothers and sisters within the union. That is unsatisfactory. And now I'm gonna speak off the cuff. I feel that with not even following the agreed-upon civil service rules, it speaks more to the ineptness of what this administration is doing and what they're actually practicing. And at this particular point in time, I am very, very, I'm leery. I'm very sad and saddened by what is happening. These are the people who worked through the entire pandemic, the people who delivered food. My department never went home. We kept the money, we kept the lights on. And for this to be sent out without following the prescribed rules is a level of disrespect, and yet we have people who want to call us labor partners. You don't do that to your labor partners. You actually meet with us. You actually go and look for solutions and come upon mutually agreed-upon path on how we move forward. And on that, thank you, and my time is...
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Moving to Pallavi. Pallavi, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Sorry if I said your name incorrectly. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Pallavi Somusati. I've been a homeowner in District Seven for the past 14 years. I live at the intersection of Grass Valley... I live at the intersection of Grass Valley Road and Skyline. I love my neighborhood. We're surrounded by nature and illegal dumping. The cuts to public works, parks and rec, and transportation are gonna be very painful for my family and my neighborhood. I'm here today to tell you that the loss of Fire Station 28 in my neighborhood is already being felt very deeply. My two children, who are now attending Oakland Public Schools, both attended Betty's Children's Academy, a community fixture and preschool that sits across this fire station. Many events have been hosted that brought Betty's students together with the firefighters. At the age of three, my kids have been able to recite to me fire prevention tips, and I've witnessed myself all the excellent stopping, dropping, enrolling that dozens of kids, now hundreds of kids have learned at Betty's, facilitated by firefighters at Station 28. The firefighters of this station made sure that community members knew their names, and likewise, we knew them, they knew us. I cannot stress enough their impact on our community. If you come to our neighborhood, you'll also see that we have a large population of elderly residents. You'll also see multiple disabled residents. There is probably a perception that only the privileged live in the Oakland hills. That is not the case in my neighborhood. I understand that 2.6 million has returned to the city of Oakland by way of the Coliseum and Arena revenues, with quoting one council member, "The expectations that these funds be used to save fire services." We all know this reign is not going to last. Our residents deserve to feel safe in our homes. What I am asking of you is to reinstate services at Stations 25 and 28 immediately. Please get this done now.
Dave Phelps.
Yes. Hi, City of Oakland Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lynn. I'm Dave Phelps's wife, and I'm the Melrose 27X Neighborhood Council Representative. I am here to express support and stand with our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, Irina Richards. Now is not the time to cut Neighborhood Services Coordinators. Residents' trust in local government is at an all-time low, and public safety is the top concern. The city needs Neighborhood Councils more than ever. As a resident of Melrose, D-27X, Central East Oakland, I strongly oppose all cuts and layoffs that impact our Neighborhood Council's ability to function. These cuts will have devastating consequences for community safety, trust, and collaboration between residents, the city, and law enforcement. NSCs play a vital role in crime prevention, community engagement, and problem solving. They serve as liaison, ensuring that neighborhoods, especially those most impacted by crime and systemic challenges, have direct access to city resources and responsive policing. Let it be known that our wins in Melrose are thanks to working with Irina and not the council. This decision will not make Oakland safer. It will erode the relationships and community-led efforts that are essential to a healthy and resilient Oakland. I urge you to reconsider these cuts and protect the positions that keep our neighborhoods engaged, empowered, and secure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, all names have been called.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone. And with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Well, you wanna comment? We have, we have 20 sec...
20 seconds. I just wanted to state, well, most of the people who were in here have gone. But I guess I will just put it on the record that when we passed this mid-cycle budget, there were commitments or agreements that were made about potential cuts that would be forthcoming. There were no good options. Nothing was ideal at that time. And we made that very clear, that these cuts were coming. And the administration went through a process to identify those cuts. I'm not really clear, President Gaio, on what that process was. And that is what I'm beginning to hear from constituents in my district as far as residents are concerned when it comes to CBOs, as well as the staff that serve the city. So through the chair to the city administrator, I do have some questions that I would like to know if it's possible to come through in a memo that identifies without sharing sensitive personnel information the positions that have been cut and how, if possible, once again, I'm trying to consider the sensitivity of the individuals who receive these notices, but how those decisions were made and what these positions are. As I stated, when we passed the mid-cycle budget, we were clear that some cuts would be coming. But at that time, I also requested information on how we would curb overtime spending in the Oakland Police Department. And I would like to get that information because from what I understand and was shared by our finance director, the majority of the overspending that has us outside of our budget is coming from one department. And I also understand from some city staff that that is because they're understaffed. So I just want some clarity based on the information that I've heard today, what I've seen in the media about the process that got us to this point. How were the decisions made? How were individuals notified in terms of staff, but also community-based organizations? I'm receiving a number of calls and emails from youth centers and different programs that are saying that their contracts are not being renewed or they haven't been paid for services rendered. So I would like to understand how or if those organizations who have rendered services will receive payments, when that might be or when it might not be, how are impacted organizations being notified? And will there be information that is made public for our staff as well as the organizations who have served the city? That said, it is my personal belief, as I came into office in 2021, that the city of Oakland is not a philanthropic organization. And I don't believe that it is the responsibility of the city, of any city government, to fund nonprofit organizations. I ran a nonprofit organization, never requested funds from the city. And I think it's time for philanthropy to really step up and support organizations that are doing real work in the city and actually have demonstrable impact. But at this time, I think it's really important that we take care of the city of Oakland to maintain our solvency. But that also means that I want to understand better how the notices were given to our city workers to help us keep the lights on, especially in revenue generating positions. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate, this is a difficult time for everyone. I have four questions about these layoffs, and I don't expect the answers now, but if we could get them. Number one is, are we laying off from revenue generating positions? Because we asked that, and we were assured that we were not laying off from revenue generating positions. Number two, are we following the civil service rules? Number three, are we making cuts from administrative positions from the top as well? And then number four, are we laying off from non-general fund positions? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Houston.
My question is a little bit off.
To the chair, before we continue, through the chair to all the council members, this is open forum, so members of the public aren't, didn't receive notice of this discussion topic on the agenda. So I would caution against getting into discussion at this point.
Thank you, thank you. And for members of the council, members of the public, we will have a committee meeting on Friday that deals in depth with the finance department, the finance, the budget situation. And we will also have a council, special council, full council meeting that would clearly receive a presentation, have debate, recommendations to the administration to recommend what our priorities will be in terms of funding, make balancing the budget. But at the same time, what is our goal? What is our strategy for the coming years? We need to develop a council strategy goals and also a budget that goes with that. And so we'll have that opportunity to be able to have that, not just debate discussion, but take the action to settle the current budget, but also to plan for July, because we have 2026 coming up. And then we gotta think about what is beyond 2026 that we ought to be prepared for, be balanced, and most of all, meet the residents' needs in our neighborhoods. So we have those opportunities coming up to deal directly with the administration and the public's information. So with that, that you have one more? Because I wanna adjourn the meeting and move on.
Just through the chair, before Councilmember Houston goes, just for clarification, there may be a meeting among a few council members on Friday, but there is no special committee or a special council meeting that has been noticed through the city clerk's office. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, we will call for one, and we'll go through the process. But for this special meeting that we're having on Friday, you gotta remember, the other council members already had one. So it'll be Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Five, and myself meeting with our finance directors and our administration.
City Administrator, they gotta fix this mic. Everybody else doesn't have this issue but me. City Administrator Johnson has a hard job, a very hard job. And I'm gonna support him through this process. And I would like to know, when are the union individuals that we're talking gonna come back to the workplace? When are they gonna come back to the workplace? I have an issue with that because if we, they shouldn't have to be forced by our city administrator to come back to work. If you see our city in the condition that they are in, you should be wanting to come back to the workplace because you want to come back to the works, not forced by the city administrator to come back. So I have a problem with people not coming back to the workplace and working at home three, four times a week. I have an issue with that. When I see his staff there every day, I see other staff members there, I expect the workers to come back to Oakland's workplace.
Thank you. Thank you, and we certainly, as a council, need to take action, be unified, and move the city forward, not just today, tomorrow, but for the coming years. And with that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.